So this is a combined meeting of the Historical Commission and the Library Board of Trustees. And time administrator, Tracy Blaze, Town Clerk, Elizabeth Healy, and Jeanne.
And Jeanne.
I don't get a title.
Jeanne. And the public, Barbara Rogers. So the purpose of tonight's meeting was basically to start a discussion about local history. What do we have? Where is it? How will we manage it? It came up in the course of, maybe over the last year or two for us in the library, that we needed to be doing something with it. And we initially talked about getting an archivist to come in, hiring an archivist as a means of getting a better handle on what we had and managing it going forward until we looked at the price. And then we said, well, that's not going to happen. So we took what we thought was the fiscally responsible way to go. And that was, we had a staff member at the time who was very much interested in learning more about the process of being an archivist and working on our local history. So she began the process of inventorying what's in the room. And then when time allowed, and there were webinars and so forth on becoming an archivist and learning more about that, she would take those. And I think, Jeanne, would we have her working, an extra four hours a month?
Six.
Six hours a month. Okay. So that was the process that we put in place, just by getting a better handle on what we had in the library. Historically, when the library opened, this building opened 20 years ago, we had then a staff of around 12 people, one of which was the reference librarian who also augmented as part of her job was overseeing this room. She had an assistant, too, if I remember correctly.
Full-time assistant.
And so there was people who were knowledgeable about what was in the room and how they could help people. So that obviously has changed over time. The staff has gotten smaller. We don't have the resources we had at that time when we opened. So going forward, that was the approach we took. And then through the course of this discussion, we find that Leslie has a ton of information in terms of town documents. The Historical Commission has other documents in another location. We've got documents here. And then, just to backtrack on Jane, who was doing the inventorying, that was working out, okay, we were getting there little by little. It was incremental. Then she got a better job and left. So that just kind of got kicked to the curb and nothing else has happened with really any great significance since then. So thus, we started having a conversation. What do we have? What does the town have? How do we manage it going forward? So that was the reason we figured we'd pull everybody that has an interest in it together, identify what we have, where is it, how is it preserved, how do people access it, and how do we handle it going forward so that we can make it more readily available? So that's kind of where we were at and the reason why we wanted to have the meeting. I'll open it up. Anybody has thoughts and observations and, you know?
I'm just curious, how did the library get the documents you have versus the town clerk versus the Historical Commission? How did you determine what went where? Just out of curiosity.
That's a very good question.
That's a good question. These?
Random.
Random.
Yeah, but these were in the old library. And just when we closed the old library, it was moved in.
Yeah. I think for the most part, things, just people will gift us stuff and it just goes to us, you know? And it's just, things are just being...
Where are the town records? In other words, we supposedly have the longest or one of the longest-running series of town records.
Isn't that in Town Hall somewhere in storage?
Yep. We have the town clerk's responsibilities.
Okay. So you have those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are they in the building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right back to 1635.
Wow.
And those are digitized.
Some of them have. Yeah. Yeah. Some of them have.
I mean, I don't think it's an uncommon problem in a town for who's doing what to be part of the thing. There's usually Historical Commission, there's usually Town Clerk, there's usually the library. So there is a lot of overlap. I think our concern, my concern has been for years, that I just don't have the staff and I don't have the skill set. The reference librarian position was lost about, I don't know, 12 years ago. So I always feel like things are in here sort of languishing and, you know, we get questions. I got a question today I can kind of give you as an example of, you know, we don't have the expertise or the time really to answer this question from somebody in Urbana, Maryland. So, and I've talked with the Historical Commission about this before to, you know, try and figure out where to field these questions because it's unfortunate, you know, for them if we can't answer the question, but it also makes us look bad, you know? Ideally, we should be able as a community to answer those questions. So the question here is, I am researching, and this was emailed to me, I'm researching an ancestor that settled in Newbury by 1838. Do you have any town directories in the 1836-1849 timeframe? His name was William Langlands and he was both a farmer and an attorney. And it's just like, we never know what to do with those. We can't possibly bring staff in here to figure out something that they don't really understand. At one point, I think Ava or maybe Nancy was going to help us field some of these questions. Barbara has felt, has fielded this.
It must have been a lot, I think. And I grabbed one last year, earlier this year, so if it looks like something we can do, we'll take it on.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, there's a lot to talk about, but ideally, you know, I would love for the library, I'd love to see a streamlined process, kind of a streamlined website where we can be clear on what we have and what we offer. And I feel for the library, really, you know, whatever use we make of these materials in here, ideally should be regarding local families, local genealogy family histories, and things that can be used for educational purposes for local history. But to think of it as an archive, it really isn't an archive. And, you know, to not be able to answer questions like this, we just started talking about how this is really more of a town-wide thing, that the town has records, the Historical Commission is supposed to protect and preserve and all of that, those records. Obviously, there's the role of the town clerk, who sometimes I've sent people to you, but like, nobody knows what, you know, nobody knows who's on first, basically, so.
There's not a totally combined inventory, I don't think, of the documents, what you have, what we have, what Leslie has. And I think that's probably, it's tough to then direct somebody when you don't know really where to send them. And it's, you know, and that's what we want to talk about, how do we go about doing that? So what somebody does.
I send, I reply to people and give them the email address for the HIST, which is now the MOON, and the Sons and Daughters, because...
As far as the HIST goes, I had a conversation today with Bethany Doral, who's our executive director. And it's a bit premature to say it, but not very, because the money isn't in hand. We have, the HIST has been awarded a grant to begin the planning process to create a position of researcher archivist person. It is very, very inchoate at the moment, but it's common because it is goal of the museum and the museum's new exec to get this done. That person will be housed in the engraving plant, the old brick mint, in the back of our campus. And that person's function will be exactly what we've been sketching here, a one-stop, so to speak, source. But it's going to take a while. This is going to happen day after tomorrow. The planning will begin as quickly as we can get to it, certainly after our symposium a week from today and certainly after we get the museum back open to the public, hopefully Christmas time. However, that's the plan. So perhaps, despite everything that we have with the town and the library and Historical Commission, the HIST can play a role in this as well, we all hope. And let's not forget, we report public library, they could be real archivists. And also huge your budgets, so.
That's a big thing on genealogy there.
Yeah.
And I also send people there, too, because of that. But when everything was closed, it was a little more difficult. You cannot go to the library to get this information, I'm so sorry, but, you know. I mean, the best thing I know that we have at Town Hall, those books that give the birth and date and stuff like that, but, you know.
Well, yeah, it would depend on if that person was born, I mean, and what are they looking for for information?
Yeah, they're all pretty vague. Yeah. That's always my favorite question. You're like, do you have a great, great, great uncle? Gee, no.
And they lived in a white house.
Okay.
Farmer and attorney is basically what she said.
What year was it?
1837.
He settled in 1838.
So settled.
I mean, that's what I can use.
I thought that was going to be a lunch when you said they were from Maryland because we've had, at the Schoolhouse this summer, we've had three members of the lunch family stop in.
Really?
All from different parts of Maryland.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Just one this last weekend, this one, it was the fourth.
Yeah. Yeah, and when they're calling from far away, you just, you particularly want to be able to, you know, help someone. It always makes us feel kind of foolish for him.
What does Channing put on his emails? He'll break the town from which all the names have emanated or words to that effect, yeah?
A lot have. A lot have.
A lot of mystery right here, and I feel too.
Yeah.
So I guess that's the challenge right now. How do we, how do we get this inventory of data that's available? And your portal is great, and I went into it and was able to look at something. If there was a single portal that you could get to, and then somehow the data from the three sources was available to...
Yeah.
I don't know how you do it.
It's real easy, but it takes us a lot of money.
Yeah. It's very, very expensive. Like, you want to redo our website, so we've been discussing that quite a bit. Because we want to add a lot more photos and stuff, because we keep collecting more photos of houses before they get, you know, demolished, things like that. And we want to be able to have them. But the one we have now is just at the point where we just can't update it anymore, so we rebuild.
Yeah, we rebuild.
You know, so we can add something like that to it, so then we have, we're going to have like a directory to, you know, everybody. You know, whether or not we get everything digitalized that you might, you know what I mean? I feel like that's the, you know, the missing piece now. It's like, we've got all this stuff, but...
And I have actually no sense of what it costs to digitize this.
Lot of money.
Yeah, it takes time, somebody scanning, editing, and coding.
And the other question is, what do you do with the records before the invention of the typewriter? You can scan handwritten stuff. Harvard does it, but it's just loaded with errors when it comes out.
And best luck to the professionals. I wouldn't touch those old documents.
Oh, yeah, that's the thing, like, that's where we're all worried. It's like, no matter how old they are, but I want to, you know, break them out.
We sent a scanner and have them all to have it done. Yeah, we sent them out.
Okay.
To a company that does that professionally.
Just in terms of reference, Leslie, we had, what, $10,000 annually to spend and...
How much did you get done? Like, not a lot, right?
So initially, we were just preserving what we had, the volumes that we had. And then we moved on to the digitizing and the laser beam process. You know, once, you have to kind of identify what you really want, like, what you just save for end of the month. You can't just take, well, you could if you had endless funds, but you can't just take everything and have it digitized. It isn't lovely, but you're talking about, you know, a couple hundred years' worth of lists of persons every single page, you know, and every page costs money. So, and yeah, it's great if you can afford to have all that stuff done, but we had to prioritize. And what our priority was, was to, number one, preserve, because those records can never be recreated.
Right.
And secondly, to make it available to the public. And so we took the most important and the most often requested items and did those. And threw in a few extras, you know, a few other things that we thought were interesting. And it can be added to. So if we get more funding next year, we can, we can digitize more. And the things that, the things that are more current, more modern things that we have saved in files, we can load that stuff on ourselves.
Sure.
But when you're talking about very fragile dog animals.
Absolutely.
Nope.
Did you scan the town?
Act it up like little babies and send them off to the, to the people who do it professionally.
Did you scan the annual reports from the town? And they go way back, I know.
No. No.
We got, I know we have hard copies this week. We've got a couple in the...
Yeah, we have, we have a full set.
In the Schoolhouse, too.
It looks like we've got some.
Yeah, we've missed a couple in the Schoolhouse, but...
Yeah, we're missing a couple, too.
How far did your person get with the...
Inventory.
Yeah. You've looked it over a little bit, I think. It was all handwritten and then she was just in the process of typing it up. How far did she get?
She got a couple of cabinets and the map files.
Right. That was as far as she got.
That's about it.
Probably everything with these post-it notes on it.
I wouldn't go that far.
No.
But... See, that whole draw has post-it notes on it.
Mm-hmm.
And certain things in here have post-it notes and certain things over there do, but nothing over there does, as I can see, so.
Yeah, and these are all...
That might be the first clue.
These are all things that are commonly in print, you know, some of those.
I was going to say, I've been here looking through things just to see what's in here. And I feel like this is mostly like us and this isn't.
Yeah, there's history books and family histories and things like that. And vital records, which I think are mostly digitized now. Maybe. I seem to remember somebody from the Historical Commission telling me that.
Well, that would have been me, but only because of her. 1910 or 1912.
And that's just for Newbury?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think some of our vital records may be for more than just Newbury, although I'm not entirely sure about that. But, and this is pretty much where the roving archivist that I sent out to everybody today, that's pretty much where we landed. We were dealing with Historical Commission at that point and she wanted us to get an inventory. And then, you know, I was reading through it again today and it just seemed like it just comes back to, you need a professional, you need, you know, you need an archivist. So, you know, in a perfect world, to have like a town archivist, part-time, maybe a couple hours a week, I don't know, that could help coordinate all of this, you know, it's just one of the many things that can be discussed.
And almost, you know, have like one point person to kind of head it.
Exactly.
I mean, just, you know, looking at it from a funding standpoint, are there organizations out there that would fund something like this?
There are organizations for libraries, the Boston Public Library, the Mass Archives, which are mentioned in the roving archivist report.
The archivist report, yeah.
Will help with digitizing, but we don't even know what to digitize. So there's almost like another level where somebody has to come in and advise us on what to digitize.
But then they keep the records. They're digitized and they're on their website. They're not on our website.
They can link.
And then they're, if you can link, yeah. And then, and then from what I was to let you believe, that there's also a limit. They're, they're not going to come in and say, we're going to take every single thing you've got in here, you have to pick and choose what you want.
And I don't think there's a reason to, because some of these things may be digitized.
Right.
Well, she did speak to us about the dates and some of the things that we have because they're really old, but they're not the only ones that, that there is.
Right.
It could be 50, 100 copies of this particular book that we have that's already old, but it's not the only one, it's not unique. And that was a priority, I believe.
Yes.
I haven't read this thing in ages.
Determining how unique they were.
San's husband, 2018, but, yeah. So that was like when she was talking to us. I think we even had that recorded, but it's probably on our website, under our website because we had a, we had a call and meeting for it.
Oh, you did, you're right. Yeah, so you probably did.
It's probably, I think it's, I believe it was videoed, but I can't remember now. I mean, I'm getting old.
Yeah, but I think we had...
But that was the thing, you know, you've got this book that's really old, but is it the, I mean, I can go out online and pull up Korea's book that, you know, if we had it here, it'd be like this precious book because it's an original and all that, which is great, but it's not the only place to get the info. It's out on the web. You can pull the whole, the whole books up that he did and print them out even.
Two years ago, Jabalocky had five copies in there.
Yeah.
I don't know where they picked them up. They're old.
One of them was, had elastics on it to hold it together. And they wanted like $200 or something, but I'm like, okay, yeah. That's when I went out on the web and Googled it. You could print the whole, I did once, print the whole book out. So that stuff's out there. We don't need to preserve what's already out, what's available. It's things like our town only stuff that...
Right, exactly.
Is a one-of-a-kind kind of shit.
Something for your records.
Well, you've got everything, it's so awesome.
Jeanne, before you had someone in-house working on it, did, or maybe ticket, we shouldn't say, you had gotten a quote to have an archivist come in and inventory for it?
Jeanne had started looking into it and the numbers, you know?
And I think Leslie and I had talked, too.
And I don't have remembrance of what the number was, but it was enough to, it was enough to say, we didn't have, I mean, so it wasn't even a matter of, you know...
And you always think about, we had talked with the commission, oh, we'll get an intern, you know, from, I forget, it's never...
Yeah, there was a couple of colleges that people...
And you're still putting in the time supervising them, you know? We really kind of need somebody that's going to supervise us.
A professional.
Professional, yeah.
Yeah.
What are you laughing at?
Supervise us.
Yeah. Blinding, like...
We need a retired person who's done this, that can, you know, come in even for a minimal, minimal salary or something that, you know, just to have like, almost like a stipend just to come in if they have training.
And I don't think they'd be that hard to find. I think if we put them on, you know, library websites or the town website, especially with so many people retiring these days, I think there might very well be somebody, maybe not super experienced, but with enough experience so that they more or less know what they're doing and would be willing to at least come in here and help us get, you know, help all of us get organized and be the point person.
If you had an inventory and then, and then you could figure out, well, this is online, that's online, that stuff is one of a kind, you know? With this amount of stuff, it's not a daunting, I mean, it's daunting when you don't have time to do it, but it's not a daunting project. It's not a huge project. And it seems like it should, the inventory should be done first and anyone could do that, really. You could have a senior volunteer to do that.
Sally may be willing to do that.
Yeah. Yes. And it would be a great starting point because then you would, you would have everything you know. It would, it would all be listed.
And do you feel like there's an inventory for the town?
We have one, it needs to be updated, but we do have one, yeah.
Historical Commission?
Yeah.
Is that the safe list?
Yes.
Once there is an inventory here, then my experience has been that you can't just call up and ask somebody else to look this up. I'm going by this question. You don't know what this person wants to know, except that they want to know if you have directories or not. But most of the places that I've used in genealogy and in some of the history research, you had to pay for somebody to do that.
Yeah. I've always had people respond to me, well, I'll do it for $50 an hour. And I'm like, oh, okay. You know, like, usually it's no answer, but I'm like, all right, well, that one spent $50, spur yes or no. And I'll say, thank you for your time, you know, and then move on. But I almost always get that response from anybody, so it's not surprising.
And the MOON, I guess it is now, they charge, but they don't charge for members, is that right? But somebody, like, somebody from here is obviously not...
Yeah, right. Happy to help, but staff time, effort, you know, very things Terry just touched on.
I've done, I've done a lot of that for the MOON research. And that first hour, you're really checking what information you've got, because you've got to make sure the information they're giving you is correct before you can roll the line. So you really lose that, that first hour.
Yeah. So you're doing that as a job?
I'm not doing it currently, but I didn't pass.
As a paid job?
Yeah.
You want the job? Just put together the job description?
Because you need another volunteer job.
I know.
I do.
No, I, I think a little... I know they had students of one age and from BU, Spencer Pierce Littlefar, doing some things like that.
Well, they have an archival education course at Simmons College as well.
So I was going to say, we just need to like...
Because I took it. Yeah. And so they might be a resource to find an intern.
I mean, I had to do three internships when I was at college. I think these people are like looking for opportunities for the credit because you need to...
Yeah. Well, in some experience, so you get something to put on your resume.
Absolutely.
That's right. Yeah. Right. Yeah, so if, yeah, I would, I would contact them, sure.
I mean, do you recall any sense of what it would cost for, to hire an archivist, like, as a full-time person?
I think it really depends on the job itself.
Was it like a project cost or was it like a salary?
Usually hourly, but I, the little bit I looked into.
Yeah.
Anywhere from like 25 to 40 an hour.
Right, right. Does that make sense in a theory of like specialist or whatever and things like that?
Yeah, but like Erin was saying, you know, like a website like Idealist that caters more to nonprofits, you know, you can actually put together a job description or a job, whatever, you know, somebody looking for a job, but it would be a volunteer position. And a lot of people trying to be above their resumes and like that. Or maybe just fell out of work because of the pandemic, who knows? But there might be people, you know, I think it would be worth the effort. And, you know, there might be somebody in Newbury that's just dying to do this. Or, you know, maybe you know somebody or something, you know, maybe it's eight hours a week, you know, just, I don't, I can't see it being much more than eight hours a week unless you needed more help or you folks needed more help. Yeah.
You have an inventory of all of your documents.
Yeah, we do, we have a full inventory of it. Of all of our documents?
I mean, whatever...
We have like a sort of inventory partially done of everything, but it's never...
So your, your inventory needs to be brought up to date, so?
Yeah, but ours is mostly like taking scribbled sheets and making an actual typed-up list of it.
So I mean, that's, that's kind of like the first step in this process, is getting a real handle on the inventory.
Yeah.
Because I'm doing the same thing at the Schoolhouse, but I just, just never seem to find time to type it up. I've written it, taken pictures of books and...
That's where we are, too. Right, Alex, you looked, you looked over that inventory and I thought it was complete, but just not typed, am I wrong?
This piece, I have not looked at the manuscript of, at Jeanne's...
All right. But I'm pretty sure she told me when she left that it was completed, she just hadn't finished typing it.
She hadn't finished typing it, okay.
I'm like 90% sure.
Well, we need to get somebody old like we are that can read script.
I can't.
Well, go to Catholic school because they're still teaching it.
Very detail-oriented as well. And I may have a volunteer here.
Isn't that sad? Who would have thought that would ever happen? You have like all these people's diaries that people are not going to be able to read because there's no way they're going to be able to feed these into something and scan them into anything, because...
That's how I feel when I look through the old deeds and...
You have like all these people's diaries that people are not going to be able to read because there's no way they're going to be able to feed these into something and scan them into anything because.
That's how I feel when I look through the old, you know, deeds and stuff, I can't read the handwriting.
Zoom in real big, I'm like, what does that say?
Or you have your types though.
But they still take a person that you're real in that room, so. You can all sleep at night.
I feel like proprietor's records and everything, all handwritten, all that stuff is handwritten. It's just, and people aren't going to be able to read it if they don't teach these kids. I don't read what I, we always called, we had printing and writing, now they call it ersa, but when I was a kid, it was called writing.
Writing changes.
Penmanship, yes.
Yeah, it was penmanship.
Yeah, we had two paths, yeah.
So the first step in the process going forward would be to try to identify, how do we go about getting this inventory completed?
Yeah.
What kind of individual would we be looking for?
Well, I think I might have one.
Oh, okay.
She came in today, she's Sally Ryan, and she worked with Jane on putting, on the inventory, handling all of it.
All right, so.
So that's, that's a small.
But in this sense, that would be expanding her volunteerism to doing work with the historical commission also.
She was a senior volunteer.
Did she?
Like I did.
She was a senior tech.
So you're thinking that the notes are just not transcribed? Is that what it is?
Right.
So she's willing to transcribe?
I haven't asked her yet, but she can. I gave it today, offered to volunteer now.
But you're thinking this is all been, this is all.
Everyone's listed somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. That would be very cool.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Once it's typed, someone's going to go check them off, I mean.
She was attached.
Everybody take a page.
She was a senior volunteer.
What's her name?
Sally Ryan.
Sally Ryan.
Sarah Ryan.
If it's digitized, you can put it in a database.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to get somebody who can take whatever, wherever we're at and finish it, work with the historical commission on what they have that needs to be, you know, updated. And then once we have that in place, we can, in the meantime, I think if we start thinking about how we can start funding the next phase of this, and it's probably through, you know, grants of some sort, whether it be at a state level or, you know, through organizations, and start thinking about what are the resources that are available. None of it comes quickly, I understand that.
And the problem with a grant, not to be negative Nancy, is it takes staff time to administer and monitor and.
No, understood, understood. But if you, if you get the right person in here after they're given their, their direction, you know, they should be able to go forward and do the task, otherwise that's not the person we want.
So are you talking about an archivist?
I don't know.
An intern archivist, is that what you're talking about?
This is, this is a realm that.
Yeah.
I took a history course. So this is not my area of response, yeah.
I'm with you, I'm, this is my area, it's my accounting, but I'm hearing more of this as a project.
It is a project.
This is not hiring an archivist, this is a project.
A project, absolutely.
Figuring out how much money we need to have an archivist inventory, the whole thing, the, the historical commission's documents, the library's documents, I think yours are pretty good shape, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't take anything to update our inventory.
Okay, so.
And if theirs is all done, it's just not typed, that's.
That would be a big shock.
You don't pay somebody $40 an hour to type it.
To type it, right, right. But just to have someone maybe go over and I don't know.
And verify it.
How comfortable you feel with the, the information that you currently have, are you confident in it?
Yeah.
She was very detail oriented, I would say, yes.
Yeah, she was, yes.
Okay, okay. I, I think, again, not my area of expertise, but it sounds more like this is a project that we need to accomplish and rather than doing, you know, eight hours a week and letting this continue to languish for years, why don't we look at, you know, appropriating an amount of money, whatever that sum may be, as big as it may be, just look at what the potential project costs might be and not consider it coming from, you know, the historical commission's huge budget.
Oh, yeah.
More than we. Whatever is lying on us, but look at. Proposing before the select board and at town meeting that we make appropriation from, from an available fund to make a commitment, whether it's, you know, like we do for the town clerk, we have an annual commitment, it's a small amount, it's only $10,000, but we're trying to do a little bit here.
But it's sheer, absolutely.
You know, maybe with a larger commitment, we could make more progress more quickly.
Yeah, so say we need 10,000 to start and then it goes from there.
Or 100,000, I mean, I don't know what the amount is, I got a number. Yeah, yeah.
So has that, has that ever been proposed before?
This is the first, maybe I've been made aware of this.
Yeah, now this is, this is all something that needs to be. I like the idea you call it a project.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking.
I thought it was a project.
Something that's ongoing, it's just like an end.
Right, and you have to have.
What's nice is if you've got a number, that's, let's say 10K, 15K that you could spend a year on this or something out of our budget here, matching funds would be a snap for this thing, especially if it's going to go to interns.
Exactly.
So I could help with that, I'm good at that.
Yeah.
What sort of places would you go to for the matching funds?
What?
Just curious.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I've never done it for a town.
Okay.
But, but point me in the right direction.
Yeah.
That's what I did for 45 years.
Yeah, in my mind, I thought of it as being as a project. Because if you say hourly or salary, it makes it, so it's an endless thing where, you know, it can drag on forever, but if it's like, all right, we have a goal that like by 2022 we have this all wrapped up and figured out, then it's not this like, you know, chasing a, a carrot kind of thing. I mean, I know we, we have things, we've talked about this ad nauseam of trying to get people in town together to like bring photos and get things out of their closets and like.
Scanning days.
Yeah, because God knows, everybody's got a bunch of stuff randomly in their attics, but nobody's putting them on, you know, everybody posts crap on Facebook nowadays and stuff, so it's like.
We've wanted to do that forever, have a community scanning day because we have scanners.
And just, you know, get the stuff out of there, because like every now and then we see things popping up on Facebook and someone's like, oh, I was in my dad's closet, look at these old photos. It's like, yes, ah, please, you know, like, that's what we want.
See, it's an age thing, it's a generation thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got photos that, you know, that are sepia toned, that have been in the family, like from my, my grandparents, like birth pictures from the 1800s.
Right, of course.
But, you know, I mean, people today, everything's on their phone or on a, a camera somewhere, there's no physical anything, which is a totally different, you know, from going through the album and looking through, oh, God, these pages stuffed together and no, it's a whole different world, so none of that stuff's on Facebook unless somebody like 20 puts it on there.
That's what I know, that's what I'm trying to like, I want to like, I want to get all the grandkids to start poking their grandparents and like go through the, you know, go through the stuff.
What is our generation's database? Slides? I've got, I've got.
I've got slide readers, I have slide readers, my mom's.
Oh, I'm sorry, that might be your generation. My mother's generation was the, the white pictures with the little.
That's previous, I'm not your mother.
Yeah.
Previous, that was the previous.
Yeah.
Well, this is what's so, so exciting really, because getting this stuff out of the way, this administrative stuff out of the way will enable our staff who really wants to do more stuff like that, more community oriented programs, you know, based on local history.
Also, I think like once we get it done, I think having those days and getting things in, it'd be a lot easier than like filter it in and be able to like plug them into wherever they belong, you know.
Right.
Town and pictures of the streets or, you know, important people, I'm always thinking for work.
I think getting money to support something, I think it should be easy, especially if we could come up with matching funds.
100%.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's so many places to go.
So it's just, what is the next step then? Somebody draws up the project plan?
Yeah, and, you know, it's going to be, you know, what does the project consist of? You know, what are the elements of the project?
Yeah, scope of work, yeah.
Yep.
And who does that?
That's a good question.
Well, once, you need the inventories first. Everybody needs a solid inventory before you can.
Yeah, because we don't want to be.
Right.
So assuming that the inventory isn't that part of the project.
We can do it, we have.
Because I mean, the first part of the project. You have these books, the town has these books in the town hall, you have these books, we have some of the annual reports at the Schoolhouse, so obviously we don't need three sets of them that to get scanned or digitized. We only need one complete set to get there, so I guess, do we have everything here? Do you have everything there? You have everything there, don't you?
We allegedly have a full complete set.
Well, that set, whole box is on the bottom shelf, isn't it?
And it's all tied together with string.
Yeah.
Which is. So you don't even look at the string because it'll go. Yeah, it's all, I can see them from here. It's all the same books, it's the same ones. So obviously we don't need to duplicate efforts.
No, right.
And in that realm, we, the town already pays for Laserfish, so anything can be, and we are all under the guise of the town, so if we're already paying for Laserfish, it kind of would make, you know, common sense to put everything.
Central deposits, yeah.
Exactly.
Right, and put it on Digital Commonwealth with a link, is, is that what you're saying?
Correct. It doesn't belong to us if it's there, that's the way I felt about it.
Why, that's how I feel.
I'm like, that's not ours anymore. That, that's the Boston Public Library.
I'd rather have it be.
I want, I wanted it to be ours, yeah.
Well, that's what happened with the, with that, those people who came in and then the records, the early records, I can't think of it now, remember they, they were, and then it ended up they own the disc, they own the.
Oh, the Mormons people society?
Were they Mormons?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They do that.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
It was, yes.
But they gave you a copy?
We have copies, yes.
Well, we'd have the originals.
But it, but it became, again, it's, they did the work, so.
So they keep a copy of it for their records?
Correct.
Do they return the originals?
We hope so. But I, we were also able to, we were able to take those discs and those have been digitized and they've been added to our depository on the, on the Laserfish.
Okay.
So, yeah, which is probably a lot easier than those pages that look like somebody pulled them out of a fire. And they're just, they're so, they're crispy, you don't even want to breathe on them, you know, I just, I was so nervous sending that stuff away, but they did a fantastic job.
I'm just curious, what kind of an environment is this stored in?
It's for us now.
Yeah.
It's, we're in the storage vault, whatever you call it, storage.
Containers.
No, it's not really a container, it's a building.
It's a building, but.
It's inside, it's allegedly climate controlled.
Oh, it's climate controlled?
Yeah, it's climate controlled.
All right, that's right.
Like they knocked the door before.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. The vault at our, our town hall is also climate controlled, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
But only in the last, what, 10 years?
Well, I mean, the stuff from 1635 went a long time without being climate controlled.
Yeah, but all the stuff that was in that safe was completely climate controlled.
It was.
When they found it again, because they couldn't even open the door, so.
So we've, we've done the best we could with what we have.
I love that, that's my favorite story, is that. The vault, that's the safe.
It's interesting, I'm doing NPR, there was a story on the radio about student, junior high students in Salem who are trying to have the only person who still has been convicted of being a witch in the Salem witchcraft trials vindicated.
That's actually North Endover Middle, Middle School.
Oh, it's North Endover.
I read that, yeah, I read that.
I think that is fantastic. And they took it on because it was a single, a woman who didn't have a husband or children, so there was no one to speak up for her. And they're bringing it before the legislature.
Oh, that's good for them.
Isn't that something?
Good for them.
Who knows when it'll come out of Newbury?
And Salem has. Salem has had all of their records digitized.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's quite a few places in the Commonwealth that have had the whole shebang.
So that might be someone worth contacting, they could probably give you some resources in terms of.
Who they use, yeah.
Right, yeah, right, right.
They, they use the same company we use.
They do, I was gonna say, okay.
So you go to the WBUR website, but, but all the names are probably there, because that's where I heard the, the story was from WBUR.
Oh, okay. So in terms of putting the scope of service together, if anybody has thoughts, send it to Jean, okay? I've got task one, inventory.
Yeah.
Inventory.
Inventory is number one.
What elements should be part of it? And we'll, we'll, we'll work with Jean to come up with a draft of a scope and we'll send it out to everybody and, and go from there.
And this document was very helpful in providing guidance, Jean, in terms of, you know, what you need to do first.
Yeah, well, she was very thorough.
Yeah.
In fact, we, yeah, we were sitting right here.
Oh, yes.
Yes. If you go, when you go on that website that you click to the state, there's another thing that shows a map and it has little stars and all this stuff, like if you click on one that has like little, it's like, there's three different symbols up there, I think it's like a little green, like a person or something, and it shows that they were here, women were here, yeah. So it shows all the places that the archivists have gone to state. So, yeah, it's interesting, all those little things, pretty full on the East Coast side here of the state anyway, it was really full, so.
Good. So if anybody has any other thoughts, please, you know, share them amongst everybody so we can kind of, because like I said, you know, it's not my area of expertise, so.
Would it be helpful to have a small group of consultants from the different parts of town, the organizations to take it on, like a subcommittee? Yeah. To get this many everybody's, you know, that would not going to be easy.
Periodically.
Yeah, I was going to say, that might not be a bad idea, like check in, every so often we all just kind of like check in together or something like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or even make attend each other's meetings.
Yeah.
And that might be the easiest way to come up with a date that we can all do.
Yeah. It's getting to be winter. You know what I mean? I'll be like, I live very close by, I know, I can walk there.
Walk over.
Or Rich could pick you up or, you know.
Gary's a long walk to my house.
So as a project manager, at, at the end, what is task X, N, the last one? In other words, what, we're done, it's 15 years from now. What is it? What, what is the end product?
I was going to say, I'd like to hope that it's not going to take us 15 years to do this.
What is the end product?
Everything go online, you get it online for the public, yeah.
You go to one location online that you can access all the.
And so everything's digitized.
And we're all branded on each other.
At least the inventory is digitized.
So you're talking about, talking about a central web location?
Exactly.
And then our individual websites could all cross.
It gets, it gets fed into that and updated periodically as, as it changes. And instead of pulling everything together in one physical location, you know, I don't see that happening.
Distributed database.
And an email address, that's like newburyhistory.org or whatever, where that person or that group of people will answer questions like the one from Maryland, you know, that's, that's maybe on your site, on the town site and on our site.
I think the goal is that, once you have that central depository, that everyone.
They can look over their own.
That's why we did it.
That's why we put the viral records in first, was because that's the most questioned, that's the questions that we get.
Oh, my gosh. And they send us an email with like 30 relatives that they want to know birth, marriage and death dates on, which is fine, I mean, I consider it part of our job, but it's, it's time consuming.
Well, and when they can, they can now go on our public portal, write on the Newbury website and do the whole thing themselves.
Are you still finding things, questions that come to you though, that, that you can't direct people to digital?
Not very often, no.
I feel like ancestry and stuff has like so much of that stuff available.
But it's not all right, it's not all right, yeah, yeah. Exactly, yeah, yeah, we've, we've run into a couple of glitches and.
And when they come to you, they, they want something that you know is factual, they want to, they're hoping they're going to find a record.
Absolutely.
That would be the goal, yeah. All right, well, great, thank you all for coming here, most appreciated, this is a good start.
That is, we're going to continue, right, are we still, are we? Oh, yay, you too.
One action we've got to work on, we can go sit in your office and do it.
The media's going to stay?
Well, I thought we were.
Oh, okay.
Now you're giving the note.
The only thing that I put on the agenda was just.
Okay, yeah, well, that's what I thought we were doing minutes, but it doesn't matter, I prefer the minutes like last week.
Oh, yes.
Now the inventory and digitization, part two, digitals.